I guess he, I guess. Call this November meeting of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to order. We have a special treat this evening. The 4-H Honor Club is here, and they are going to do our Pledge of Allegiance by Gwendolyn Reynolds and the invocation by Lee Kennedy. So everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us today. Please guide our leaders into making the best decisions for our community. Please watch over the people who serve us on a daily basis. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is roll call. If you would, mark yourself as present. That's it. All right, call the roll, please. No, wait, but Erin's not. There we go. Now, call the roll, please.
I have 21 present, three absent, Commissioner absent. Osborne absent, Keith Hudson absent, Matt Williams absent.
We've heard from all three. Commissioner Osborne's is under the weather, Matt is out of town, and Commissioner Hudson's daughter was having surgery this afternoon, and he wasn't certain if he would get here or not. Next, we have approval of minutes. These were emailed to you. At this time, we'll interchange a motion, entertain a motion. Two made the motion. Commissioner Smith, the motion. Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Are there any additions or corrections? All right, you're in favor, say aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have citizens communication. We have one person who has signed up. Is it Antunes? Mary Beth Antunes. I've always called her Mary Beth. I've never pronounced your last name before.
Good evening.
If you would, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Mary Beth Antunes, 296 Morton Drive, Spring Hill. I'm here tonight. I'm a 4-H agent that works for UT Extension here in Williamson County, and I'm here with the Williamson County 4-H Honor Club members. We are studying citizenship once again this year, and so I thought it was appropriate that we give more students an opportunity to come to the county commission. Of course, they're always welcome, but it's a more draw if they are coming with friends. So with our 4-H members, stand up. So we're joining you here for your meeting tonight. We're excited to be here. Thank you for having us. Also, we have our 4-H banquet this Thursday night, and if any of you are interested in coming, we'll be recognizing our 4-H members that evening and their accomplishments from the last school year. It's at 5:30 at the Ag Expo Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, under communications and messages, we have several agenda items. First, we have, everybody has an amended agenda at your desk. Part of the late files were in your packet, part two of them were on your desk. But we need to have several late files. We need to ask, anybody objects to hearing them? We have late filed 11/1915. Any objections? 11/1918? 11/1919? 11/1920? 11/1921? There's no objections, we will hear those. The number 20 will come before other at the end of appropriations, and the 21 will be moved to after others, the last one in agenda. Before I get that right. Now then, also, we would like to move 11/193 from the first under other to first before appropriations. We have several people here tonight just on that resolution, so if there's no objections, we would like to move that up. 7/193, move up to our first resolution after the consent agenda. Any objections to that? All right. We do not meet in December. This will be something for us to consider. We need to talk about, and I'm going to bring it up now, and I'll bring it up again. We have seven late filed resolutions because we do not meet in December. Our county is growing to the certain point that we may need to consider adding. We had to have five special committee meetings, I think, to try to get these heard, so we need to consider adding a December meeting because some of this stuff has to be done before the end of the calendar year. This will be something for the Rules Committee to consider. If we do it, we can change it in October of next year on a simple majority, or if we change it during this year, it'll take two-thirds vote. But I think it definitely needs to be considered. Now, that's all of my preaching. Next, we have report of county offices. The county mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask Nina to step forward and give us our monthly snapshot of the financial condition of the county.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This evening, in your packet, you have the September 2019 month-end report for the Cool Springs Marriott. We did have a profit of $68,500 this month. Also in your packet is the education impact fee report. Total collected to date is $43.5 million. Total available for allocation is $24 million. Of that $24 million, we did sell bonds last week. We used $13.3 million of that, so the remainder is $10.6 million. Our GO bonds went out. We got a interest rate of 2.40, and on our Rural Debt Service Fund, we got a rate of 2.42 percent. Also this evening, ensure privileged tax report for the month had total collections of a little over $987,000. Your monthly financial statement of September, first three months of the year are looking on track. Nothing unusual to report to you there. So if you have any questions?
Mr. Dwight Jones?
Tommy, I don't know that this is the right time, but to piggyback on your comment, is it too late to change the rules in this meeting to get December on the books? Okay. Just asking. It's not going to help us in doing it in the middle of the year, I guess, now.
Are there any questions about the budget report?
Mr. Chairman, with all the added late files, I'll answer any questions you may have about something.
Seeing none, thank you. Director of Schools? Superintendent, or what's the official title? I've heard, I hear both, so.
It's interchangeable, Mr. Chair, so I'm not sure which. I think my card says Director of Schools, and I call myself the superintendent. I don't really know, but.
Because I call it Director of Schools, and I've seen it as Superintendent in the paper, so that's.
It's all over the code with different, whatever works. I'm obviously the superintendent of schools, however you want to call it. I did want to give you all a little bit of report of where we are from a budget perspective. As of one-third into our school year, which is basically three months or 60 days, we are 53 students below our budget projection. This is pretty much in line with what we've seen the last couple of years as far as growth goes. So we anticipate in the next month or so, especially when January hits, we will have topped that line over our projections for this coming year. And again, as I said, that's fairly common for us. We have two items on your agenda tonight. One of them is just an intercategory transfer. The other is related to our fund balance to serve some special ed teachers' assistance. You may want to talk about that in detail when we hit that item. But I did want to mention to you that this is actually the second time we've talked about fund balance issues in this particular budget year. The first was related to early childhood classes, again, a special ed program. So I thought it was important for you all to see that theme because as we continue over the course of the year, that is often, from a direct services perspective, the point at which we need additional budget money as we go through the school year. Often, we get asked about our fund balance. We have an expectation from the Department of Education that they won't approve our budget as we hit July 1 without having a 3% fund balance, and wanted to let you know that we are currently $3.6 million over that 3% fund balance for last year. So from a month-to-month operational standpoint, in that context, we're in good shape. I felt like it was important to mention that to you.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe we have a hospital report. Let's see.
I'm here to have you take any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, I guess not. Thank you. And are there any other committees to make report? If not, Betsy, I know what she wants to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give a shout-out incorporating the 4-H. Next week, the State Family and Community Education Group, it used to be called Home Demonstration, it used to be Extension Homeakers, but they will have a state conference at the Franklin Marriott. This group of individuals supports 4-Hers with scholarships for camp. They also support volunteerism in Williamson County and the state. We support reading, and we also support many other nonprofit programs. So if you see a crowd of folks at the Franklin Marriott next Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, you'll know that it's a good group of people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other announcements? All right, next, moving on to elections and appointments. We have Beer Board, three-year term expiring on 11/22, term expiring Tommy Randolph and Tom Wilson. Nominees are Tommy Randolph and Tom Wilson. Entertain a motion?
No.
All right, Commissioner Herbert, the motion. Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. All in favor? Oops, sorry. Okay.
Here, it says that Tom Wilson's in the 3rd District. It needs to be corrected. He's in the 2nd District.
It's on the ballot.
On the nominee sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Veterans Service Officer, filling an expired term expiring in 6/21. Resigned is Janine Hinkle, and nominee is Jeff Vaughn. Entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Sorry, who was the?
Paul Webb.
Paul Webb, the motion, and Dwight Jones, the second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. I think the only thing on the consent agenda was the notaries, so we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Commissioner Smith, the motion. Commissioner Lathers, the second. This is loaded. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
21, yes. Zero, no.
Consent agenda passes. Next, we have Resolution 11-19-3, Resolution to Approve the Economic Impact Plan for a Tax Increment Finance Program and Associated Incentive to Mitsubishi Motors, North America Incorporated, as requested by the Industrial Development Board of Williamson County. Commissioner Landrum?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Tax Study Committee?
4, 4, 2 against.
Property Committee?
4, yes, 3, no.
And Budget Committee?
3, yes, 1, no.
All right, explanation, please.
Yes, this pretty well speaks for itself on the resolution as titled, and I would ask, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, if Mayor Anderson could come speak on the history.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. In just a few moments, we've got several people that can speak to this and get into the weeds, if you want to get into the weeds. It's gone through a lot of committees, but we're proud that Mitsubishi has decided to locate into our county. As many of you know, over the last nearly 20 years now, we've, the first program we did was Promise, then we went into Nissan, and we've had a dozen that have come forward over that period of time, bringing many jobs to our county to help explain the unemployment, the low unemployment that we have. And I know there's a tendency in the world we live in today is that as these companies are locating here, why do we have to do anything? Well, that's the competitive nature of where we are in society, whether it's another state or another city that's wanting these good companies in which to bring their good jobs here. If you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, to ask Elizabeth to come up from ECD, Williamson County's ECD, and kind of give a snapshot of that. Kenny Young is here to address any legal issues that you may have, and we can get as deep as you want to, and I know many of you have heard the speeches, but I will say this, that the companies that have located here, they're all good corporate sponsors. They support the things that we're doing in our county, and they do bring not only good jobs, but they bring good corporate citizens that support many of the other programs that we have in our community. Elizabeth.
All right, so I didn't come along tonight. I've also got Mark Chaffin, the COO of Mitsubishi North America, Angie O'Leary, the chief HR person for Mitsubishi, and then Chris Bowles with Bradley. Bradley is the attorney law firm out of Nashville. I think most of you have actually heard from them, specifically Tom Trent, who's been here to do some of our incentives in the past. I'll do a quick overview of the project itself, and then we're here to answer questions. I think most of you have heard this through committees, so I don't want to go too far into details, but I absolutely want to spend time answering your questions. We're talking about almost 200 jobs, right at 200 jobs. This is their North American headquarters that will be relocating from Southern California. This was a competitive project. They were looking at both Dallas and the option of staying in LA, and so it was important to us that we move forward with an incentive offer. We did this in conjunction with the State of Tennessee. So the State offered incentives and came out pretty strongly wanting this specific project, wanting this brand to be here in Tennessee and in Williamson County. Couple of other things just to mention, because they came up in committee, and so I want to make sure that we address them here, our incentives are only ever offered on brand-new property, which means that we don't take things off of the current tax rolls, and they are also never going to touch the taxes that are set aside for the schools. So while we may abate or discount the taxes, we aren't doing it to the extent that it gets into that almost 70% that is set aside for the schools. This specific project is a 10-year TIF. Chris and Ken Young are going to be much better at explaining to you the difference between the TIF and the pilots that you are historically used to, but it really just has to do with the fact that Mitsubishi will be taking 20% of a building, not the entire building, and so the TIF is a slightly easier process when you're looking at a project like that. If you've got questions that we can talk about, anything else that you want me to address specifically, I will tell you. One of the things that we were pretty excited about early on, they are relocating a handful of employees from Southern California here, but the majority of those hires are going to be local, to the point, to the extent that very early on, after they had made the selection to come to Williamson County, we hosted a job fair for them in our chamber office with the intent of making sure that Williamson County residents got first dibs at those jobs, had an opportunity very early on to come out, and we had almost 400 people attend in about a five-hour period there at the chamber office. So we're really excited about what they're doing. They're already getting involved with the schools. They're talking about internship programs, so they're already engaged with Williamson County schools as well as with the chamber and figuring out how they can be of benefit to the community. I can tell you through conversations with them, they are going to be an incredible corporate citizen for us, and so we're excited about that. But with that, I brought them here to answer questions if you've got them. If not, that's fine, too.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Smith?
First of all, welcome. We're excited to have you. What are the expectations for the average salary levels for the positions that you'll be hiring here in Williamson County?
First of all, thank you. We appreciate your consideration for this proposal. We are excited to be here as well as you are excited to have us here. Just to give you a little bit before I answer your question, we have hired already about 45 local employees. We've got about 25 to 30 offers that have been accepted as well, so we are well on our way to reaching our committed numbers for new jobs. I would say close to about 95/100 is where we are average for the jobs that we're offering. So they are really white-collar office workers, they're managerial, they're professional. We're looking at accountants and attorneys as well as analysts and specialists for all throughout our organization, marketing, finance, pretty much everywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elizabeth, this might be an unfair question to you because you may not understand exactly the structure of the budget as it breaks down, but if you could break down the actual tax abatement, you know, when you talk about the amount you're going to abate, is that just the amount that goes to general purpose school fund, or does it also include the Rural Debt Service Fund? Are we abating that amount, too? Are we abating the amount that, does that make sense?
So the abatement is only on the portion that is not set aside for schools, so it's roughly 30%.
Okay, does that include the Rural Debt Service Fund, though?
I don't think so.
Ken? Yes, it does? Yes.
Yes.
So we are giving them a tax break also on the, or not, on the Rural Debt Service?
No.
We're not? Okay, so that money is, we're not, we're not, we're getting that money that's going to the Rural Debt Service Fund?
That's correct. Anything that has to do with education, we do not give a tax break on. It's just the other side. 30% out of 70% that we collect, that's non-education.
Okay, all right. That was a point I needed to clarify, so thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other discussions? If not, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. There we go. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
19, yes, 2, no.
Resolution 11-19-1, Resolution requesting the intercategory transfer to place funds in the correct categories. Commissioner Tonnercliff?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. The school board, I think, was 12, 4, 0 against. These are my, the education committee. Please, my -- Education Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
And Budget Committee?
As amended.
Four, yes, zero, no.
This is not amended.
We voted as amended.
The next one.
You said to do it then, all right. We got it. I'm getting bad instructions.
I'm sorry, Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
All right. Explanation, please.
This is -- they needed 20 more. You have a document in front of you that tells a little bit about it, but they had requested--
No, no, you're on the wrong one. Oh, God.
Oh, they're just moving money around.
That's why we need printed paper.
No cost.
Are there any questions? Moving to the correct categories. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-2. Resolution requesting additional special education assistant, teacher assistant positions from fund balance. Commissioner Tonnercliff?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Story II. School Board was 12, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
Four-four, two against, as amended.
And Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no, for the original resolution.
All right, explanation, please.
School system needs 20, they asked for 20 new teachers, special ed, and as a -- get into the as amended part, correct? And as amended, we have cut it to 17. You should have the numbers in front of you.
Move the amendment.
Move the amendment, sorry, yes.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Erin Nations.
Erin Nations, the second. All right, now that discussed the amendment, discussion of the amendment, discussion on the amendment. Seeing no discussions, I --
Okay.
Commissioner Mason?
If anybody from the Education Committee could just explain why you chose to go from 20 to 17, what was the thought process, or why was that decision made?
Commissioner Beal?
It was, I guess it was my request, man. The Superintendent of Schools was -- came in with a request for 20. I want to make it clear that I do not believe that the Superintendent was overreaching or was attempting to pad. I think it was a good estimation of what they expect to need. However, at this point, I believe, and I don't want to put words in the Superintendent's mouth, and he is more than welcome to come up and explain, I believe he was asking, or he believed he needed immediately 15, and we amended to 17 just simply because if they need additional positions come January, when they're expecting more students, then we welcome their ability to come back in at that time and ask, but as a committee, we didn't feel, at least the ones that voted for it, we didn't feel that we needed to pre-approve the positions when, just based on a speculative need. And again, I'm more than happy for Superintendent Golden to step up and explain his position better, but I appreciated his forthrightness in what they requested versus what their specific
Commissioner Beal described that pretty well. We actually, in our mapping for special ed, teachers assistants, health, through the IEPs, Individualized Education Plans for the students, we have -- we had immediate need, and we placed 14, and we projected out through the end of the year that 20 was what we expected we might need over the course of the year. So that's been our tradition, that's been our habit, when we have to come to you with an amendment to project out what we need for the end of the year. We don't hire unless there's a need, and we are super careful with mapping out the teachers assistants time to serve those students with IEPs. I certainly respect whichever way you all go on that, but again, our practice has been to project out for you, to take it to you once. The reality is, if you vote 17, then we'll have three positions to address if and when there's an increase. If you vote for 20, then we'll have six, which is our estimate based on the whole year. If we have 17, to Commissioner Beal's point, we'll come back to you when the need arises, but in either case, we're not going to hire someone unless we actually need it.
Commissioner Sturgeon?
Yeah, I wanted to know how that affected the dollar amount on this resolution.
Bill, it's stated, that's in the amendment sheet that was at your desk.
Oh. At the bottom?
If the number's there.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote on the amendment. Voting on the amendment to reduce it to 17 positions and the associated numbers. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. If you're opposed, press your no button. And I may have -- we'll see, I don't know if I pressed the right one or not. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Thirteen, yes; eight, no.
The amendment passes. Now we're back to the motion as amended. Any discussions on the motion as amended? Resolution as amended, excuse me. Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Okay.
That's the original resolution. We need it as amended.
I'm going to get it.
It wasn't preloaded, so she'll need to add as amended.
Yeah, let's get it, let us get the machine corrected, and then we'll vote.
Unless you want to do it by voice vote, and we can move on. Can we do it as amended by voice vote and move on? No. No.
Shake his head.
That was real good. No. You've already done the appropriation, though.
Anybody have a story to tell?
I do want to take the time to let everybody that was not aware and didn't see Diane's post after October, that Mayor Anderson was honored, I think he was honored, it was honored to me to give it to him at our State Ball Conference, based on the latest of the year for the county government. It's a county government elected official of the year, the Bob Wormsley Award. Diane, I think we did pull one over on him, I don't think he knew it was coming. He told me he had his portfolio complete about 30 minutes before I got to talk, and I wanted to tell him, no, you really don't, but it worked out good. But I do want all y'all to know, anybody that didn't know, see Diane's post, it was an honor on my part to be able to give it to him as the president going out, and so thank you and congratulations.
I meant to bring that up, thank you for reminding us.
I should have told you I mean to.
There we go.
All right, we've got it loaded? All right. If you're in favor of the motion as amended, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Resolution, excuse me. Commissioner Lawther. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-7. Resolution accepting donation of $200 to be used to purchase equipment for the Sheriff's Office K-9 unit and appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Williamson County Sheriff's Office Drug Fund Budget by $200, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Nations, the second. Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, Ms. Barbara Izzo donated $200 in honor in memory of Captain Willie Joe Green of the Shreveport, Louisiana Police Department to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department to be used for the purchase of equipment for our K-9 unit.
I would just inform, the Law Enforcement Committee did meet on this, what was the vote of the law enforcement?
Five to zero.
Five, zero. Law enforcement was five, zero, for the record. All right, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Commissioner Lawthers? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-8. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security and appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Sheriff's Department Budget by $40,000, revenues to come from federal through state grant funds. Commissioner Aiello?
Four-four, zero, against.
No.
Sorry.
Make the motion first.
Motion.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero, against.
Now, explanation, please.
Yeah, this is just grant funds for DUI and alcohol prevention programs accepted from the state.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-9. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Sheriff's Office Detention Budget by $65,600 for building, maintenance, and food supplies, revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Aiello?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Smith II. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please.
This is to reimburse emergency repairs to the sewer line that went through the kitchen and other areas of the jail. If you've not seen the pictures circulating in the committee, there was some pretty serious damage, and they took some pretty extraordinary measures to feed these inmates in a auxiliary kitchen. So this is to make up for those repairs and for those unexpected food costs as a result of those repairs.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-10. Resolution establishing the 2019-20 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, SCAP, for the Sheriff's Office and amending the 2019-20 Sheriff's Office Detention Budget by $11,440, revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
But did law enforcement hear this one?
Yes, five to zero.
Law enforcement?
Four-four, zero, yes.
Explanation, please.
You can see, this is a grant for $11,440 from the Bureau of Immigration and Customs Enforcement of Citizenship, which was applied for by the Sheriff's Office, and you'll see in there, this shows how this will be applied by the Sheriff's Office.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Commissioner Lawrence? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-11. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 County General Budget by $85,353.70, revenues to come from victim assessment fees. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Law enforcement?
Five.
Five-four, zero, against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, this is $85,353.70, which comes from a $45 fee that's assessed on the victims, criminals, to help with the victims of the crime, and you'll see, this is going to continue to be used for nonprofit charitable organizations to satisfy these needs for those victims of crimes.
Okay, there's a correction to the law enforcement, we did have one abstention, so four-four with, and one abstain, four-four, zero, against with one abstain. Thank you, are there any questions? All right, seeing none, all right, Commissioner Mason?
I was the one person that abstained for the vote, simply because of my employment with the District Attorney's Office. These funds can be used to help benefit victims of crime, and so to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I did abstain, and I'll abstain tonight as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes; one abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-12. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 General Sessions Budget by $3,500, revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Aiello?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Smith II. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero, yes.
Explanation, please.
The budget for evaluation of drug testing, the expenses have exceeded the budget, but there are funds collected by probation fees that are sufficient to offset this overage, so this is addressing that.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button; opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes; zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-13. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Library Budget by $49,826.89, revenues to come from donations, contributions, and fines. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Library Board?
Six-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero, against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, this is revenue from donations and $23-plus thousand in fines received by the library, and they're expending it for books and media, as well as other expenses of the library.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 11-19-15. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Health Department Budget by $1,377.65. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lawthers II. Public Health Committee? They didn't meet. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
All right, explanation, please.
As you can see, this is the grant funds from the state for child safety seats. This is money that's expected to be received in quarterly installments.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 11-19-18. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Sheriff's Office Budget by $25,872 for payment of housing, a circuit court juvenile. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Budget Committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Law enforcement? Yeah, law enforcement? Thank you. Explanation, please.
As you can see, first off, we need to have an amendment for this one. So if I can read the amendment?
Let me correct one thing first. There is a typo in this amendment and the TCA code is, not in the, it's in the body of the resolution. It's 41-4-121, in both, in the second and third whereas. So that is a typo that we will correct that does not need amendment. But that is 14, 41-4-121. All right, now proceed with your amendment. I'm sorry.
All right. The amendments in the heading, the dollar amount should be amended to $26,338. In the fourth whereas, that figure, $294, should be amended to, say, $299.29 per day. And then in the now, therefore it be resolved, be amended to show the revenue change to the $26,338 in revenue with the $26,338 in expenditures. I'll move for approval.
And Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Any questions on the amendment? The amendment is because they raised the rate. Any questions on the amendment? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote on the amendment? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Burt? What's it say? Oh, I can't read that.
The amendment is 11-19-18, not 9-19.
All right, we gotta fix that. Okay. All right, if you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Everybody's voting. Anybody wish to change your vote? Record the vote, please.
Just a second. Twenty-one yes, zero no.
All right, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the resolution as amended. Any questions on the resolution as amended? Seeing none? I assume you're ready to vote when they get it loaded? There we go. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 11-19-19. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with the state of Tennessee Office of Secretary of State, Tennessee State Library and Archives, and appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Library Budget by $18,995. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith II. Budget Committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, this is a grant through the Secretary of State's office, the Tennessee Library falls underneath, for $18,995. This grant requires matching funds, and so we're accepting the grant and then we will take the matching funds from the library general fund. But that's not in this separate resolution segment. Sorry.
Are there, are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 11-19-20. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of State, Project Division of Elections, and appropriating and amending the 2019-200020 Capitol Project Budget by $470,000. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Explanation, please.
As you can see with this one, this is changing the budget by $470,000 with grants from the state for new election machines, new voting machines.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in, all right, Commissioner Sturgeon. I'm sorry.
That's for me time, sorry. Do we, do we have to put any money into this? Or is this a straight-up grant?
This is going to, is Chad here?
Straight up.
This is a grant, but there may be some capital expenditures required.
By the county?
Right. But this is a grant for new voting machines. And I'm not sure.
Yeah, we've already, this is already in our budget, I believe. We just weren't expecting the grant funds, if I remember correctly. Was I right?
So it's a happy thing?
Yes.
It's a happy thing.
As the mayor said, it's one of those good things.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-4. Resolution amending the rules and regulation and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning the chairman as an ex officio member to committees. Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Smith II. Rules Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
This is a change in the rules where the chairperson can, may be appointed as a voting member to any rotating committee or statutory committee, except for the Budget Committee. Or they can be, they can be considered as a non-voting member of all committees. If you've got more questions, Bobby Cook wrote this.
Just kind of clarifying the rules. They were a little ambiguous. Commissioner Sturgeon.
We're just codifying it? Is that correct?
It's clarification to what the actual rule stated. It was unclear.
And this is for the chairman's position or the second chairman?
Just the chairman's.
So he can be appointed to any committee?
No. He can be appointed to any of the rotating committees or statutory committees. So it's not standing. It does not include your standing committees.
Refresh my memory on our standing committees. Budget and purchasing and insurance?
Property.
It's the law enforcement, education.
Human resources.
Tax study, property, now, human resources. Rules, human resources. Parks and Rec and steering are rotating committees. The commission, the chairman has been on those, but the, and I don't know if I'm supposed to be discussing this or explaining, but the rules state that I can't be a voting member on committees. So we're clarifying it.
Is there a reason for this? I mean, why can't he be on certain committees, but he can be on others?
The rule actually, as it's written right now, says that the chairman is a non-voting ex officio officer on all committees. The problem was, we have these rotating committees that obviously he sits on as a voting member. So the rule didn't actually prohibit him from sitting on committees. However, it was unclear whether he could. All this does is clarify what committees he can actually sit on.
Okay. But I'm just curious, what's the criteria for, what's the reason that he can sit on some and he can't sit on others?
We just didn't think it was appropriate for him to sit on all of them. And when we had discussed it, the statutory ones were the ones that we were concerned about, the audit specifically, because it's during of the day. It just provides the steering committee a little bit of leeway to fill these committees.
Okay.
With members who can make the meetings.
So you need more, it's easier to fill all the positions with one more body? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Since I'm chairman, there's no reason I can't vote, is it? No, you can vote. Okay. All right, anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Okay, twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Put the right one. Resolution 11-19-6. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute an agreement with purchase, to purchase approved, improved real estate located at 415 Downs Boulevard, Franklin, Tennessee. Commissioner Story?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Property Committee?
Four, zero, four, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
Our county election commission will be moving to this location and this resolution is to approve the purchase of the property.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11-19-14. Resolution of the governing body of Williamson County adopting the Williamson County Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan in accordance with the American with Disability Act. Commissioner Story?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Property Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Public Health didn't meet. Parks and Recreation? Six, it was six zeros. Industrial Development Board was four, zero. Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please.
In order to meet ADA requirements, the county must review and remediate any accessibility issues for all county-owned property and this starts the ongoing process.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 11-19-16. Resolution appropriating, authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a proposal with the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation for state project concerning stream mitigation for an unnamed tributary near Fly Park and Trinity Elementary School. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Lawrence II. Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Property Committee?
I believe it was unanimous.
Five, zero.
Yeah.
And Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please.
This is asking for the mayor to enter an agreement for this road improvement project to work on the tributary near Fly Park Trinity School. There's no funding involved from the county.[1571.74]